Carl Goldman with you on this very special occasion as we take a look back on the history of Santa Clarita. It's my pleasure to have one of our original city founders here, city councilman, Dennis Kuntz, welcome.
And thank you. I'm glad to be here.
It's wonderful to have you and you, you know, I moved here in 1990. So it's now some 30 years, going on 30 years here, but, but I'm a newbie compared to you and the city had formed in 1987. But prior to that, maybe we can go back a little bit. Let's, let's start a little bit with your background. How long have you been in Santa Clarita?
I've been in Santa Clarita because I was in the fire department at Los Angeles and was a fire captain and I spent about 20 years there and then had a heart attack. And so I ended up having to leave.
And what made you move to Santa Clarita?
Well, I was born and raised in Bakersfield, California. I loved it. And so when I finally got a real job and going to the, the city of Los Angeles as a firefighter, that's why I moved here was then.
And of course, because Santa Clarita is a great place to raise a family, a great place to live and...
You're exactly right, except it wasn't here then. And so one of the major things that I was able to do was to help that and make it happen to be a nice place where it was nice to begin with.
So let's go back to that, that era. What was happening at that time is we had the individual communities of Canyon Country, Saugus, New Hall, Valencia was just getting, getting started. Castaic was just a little, little dot back then and Valverde and some of the other outskirts, Aquadulce. But the four communities Canyon Country, Saugus, New Hall and Valencia were the ones that, that really pushed to have it merge into the city. But prior to that, there was a move to make this entire valley its own separate county. Were you part of that?
No, I, in fact, I was really unaware of it and I should not have been unaware, but I was. And so, no, I wasn't a part of that and I would love to have been.
So, and as I understand it, that was in the early, early eighties, late seventies, early eighties. There was a ballot measure. It went down. We could not become a county. And so then there was the start of talk about making this into its own city. So when did you step in Dennis, into being part of the mix?
Well, see, when I originally during this time, all my work was in LA city. And at that time I was representing both firemen and policemen. And so that, all my energy went basically to performing my job. And I've been raised to be involved in politics. My parents were very involved with politics. I met presidents and I enjoyed my parents involving me in what we were supposed to do. I was taught that I had to cook. I had to do the housework and the whole family was brought up that way. And, and I think that helped me do things that maybe I wouldn't do otherwise.
So you decided to get involved and, and this would be just prior to the city coming in to formation?
Yes, yes.
So you were part of that, that original planning of...
Oh, I was out there. Linda and I both ran and we went door to door, spent a lot of time doing it. I enjoy talking to people. I try to listen to what they have to say and then carry on conversations about which way to go and, and we talk things out. And I think it's important we do that in the public life to be able to get people involved in what you're trying to do. And when they say, hey, you're doing something wrong, you need to open up and say, well, let me understand what you mean. And so then you can end up doing your job better than if you just shut everything down. So you need to be open to everybody.
So what were the biggest challenges at that time? The vote had gone down four, five, six years earlier and not allowing it to become a county. What were the challenges in getting Santa Clarita incorporated into a city?
Well, I think a lot had to do with all the work that was done originally before. And I think people finally realized that if they want a city that's going to take care of them and do the things they would want, they learned they needed to start voting. And, and we have that problem in most elections where people decide, well, it'll take care of itself. Well, we need them to be involved. We need them to step up and say, this is what we want and that's what we're looking for. And, and I tried to respond to that. And everybody that I've dealt with seemed to want to do that too, is respond to what they want.
So were there obstacles at that point?
Yes, there was some obstacles.
Obstacles. What were those?
Well, the main obstacle was, was trying to get to everybody to let them know what was going to happen once we became a city. Because then we're obligated to start performing. And number one, we haven't had a city before. And I, nobody here that even got on the board had the bill, were running a city. Yes, we have people that were very much involved in local politics and you have our first mayor Buck McKeon. Well, he was on the school board, the school board, yes. And he was very, it was important that he was there. Because his knowledge that he had and he dealing in his community, that he was doing the right thing. And you had other people on that board also. So he brought with him what he learned and brought it to us. And other people that we were finally were on the board, we had good relationship with one another throughout, which helps us a lot.
So the first city council and the council members were you, we're talking to Dennis Kuntz here, Buck McKeon, Carl Boyer, Jan Hite and Joanne Darcy. Am I right there?
Oh, yes, there. Darcy, you know, she was one of those people could bring in stuff that she knew based on who she was working for, which was the county supervisor.
Mike Antonovich.
Mike Antonovich, yes. And so she had known a lot of information and how to do things. And that was very strong for us to have her with us. And sorry that she's gone, but she has a legacy that we can all be proud of. And I'm just tickled pink that we had her around.
Yeah, she was a real force here and I feel privileged to having been able to work with her on a number of projects. The, so the, the five of you, were you voted in at that time? Was there an actual election?
Yes, yes. We had, we had a couple of things that took place after the election.
But let's go back to before the election. So there were a number of other candidates as well and then...
Oh yeah, what, 27 or 28 people were running. We had people coming from outside that decided they want to get in to hope they were going to get elected. They spent a lot of money, a lot more money than I spent. And, but we, it was a good election and we got a lot of turnout. But that turnout took place because of the failures before. They realized that if they want something, they gotta stand up and do something about it. And that's important to the people that are trying to do a work is to get support to make sure they do it. Come before the city council and talk to it.
We're chatting with Dennis Kuntz, who is one of the original founders of the city of Santa Clarita on the city council, the first time out in 1987. Carl Goldman with you on KHTS FM and AM and also streaming live. And of course, you can catch this interview as well on YouTube and we'll set this up as a podcast. We actually were able to get a copy of the first city council meeting ever. And someone had filmed it and kept it and we put it on YouTube about a year and a half ago. And we're going to make sure, we'll provide a link for those who want to see that. There's a bit of history. You had a lot more hair back then.
Well, you did have to bring that up. I understand that. But, but I had known that everybody will see it if they had seen me before. Yes.
Right, right. So back, that goes back to 1987. So, so that first meeting and you're, you really are trying to figure everything out. So it's, it's like an open canvas. Take us, take us back to that first meeting.
Well, one of the first things we have to realize that we, we had to do is first of all, we had to get people to help us do our job. And so, which was very important, we, we came up with Fred Bein, which was an amazing man. He was our first city manager. And the guy knew exactly what he was supposed to do. He knew how to take care of us. He knew how to put us in our place at times. And at times I had to, we had to say no. But generally speaking, we had got a lot of information from him and he helped us do our job the way we should be doing it.
And then the mayor, which still exists today, is rotated among the city council members. Our first mayor was Buck McKeon. How did that come down?
Well, that was one of the first things we did is decide that Buck was supposed to be the one that we wanted. He was number one on the list and I'm the last one. So that's okay. So I didn't get to be mayor. But...
And was that based on a number of votes that people got?
Yes.
Okay, got it.
Yes. We went based on the level of how you got voted in. That's how we did it. Yes. And we were all happy to do it that way. It was, that was a nice thing about this organization was that we agreed to listen to each other and work with one another. And we never had any arguments basically at any time. There was all conversation being straightforward as to what we wanted and what was the best way to go. And that was so nice to be able to do that. There's a tremendous amount of power when you have that ability, have people communicating with you and being able to speak back and forth and get things straightened out how you want things to be ran.
And back then, the population of Santa Clarita was just a little over 100,000. Today we're north of 300,000. So it's more than tripled in size. But we're still very much a small intimate community. And I think a lot of that is because of both the geography and, and the anchors of Santa Clarita, the citizens of Santa Clarita. We have one government, unlike many other communities. We have one newspaper, one radio station, one school system, one college, community college. And I think that makes it for much more intimate setting. Do you agree with that?
Oh, I do. Yeah. In fact, people learned that they were going to be able to be more involved in their community. Where there were people in their, in our community that were already involved in the community, much like I was and my wife was, we, we participated in the local, whatever was going on, a boys and girls club, we got involved with that. So we were very active in this, in the community. And so that activity that the community had finally flowed into managing, help us manage the city. And it was very important to happen.
One of the biggest entities that assisted with the city was New Hall Land and Farming. And back then, New Hall Land was still developing Valencia at full speed. You had, when I came, Tom Lee was, was the man in charge and really a force for Santa Clarita. Talk about the relationship between the, the government, the city in those early days and New Hall Land.
Well, I have, I found that during that time that they, they were very comfortable dealing with us. And we were very comfortable of talking to them and telling them what we want. And, and it has shown in the last, in those years, 30 years we've had, that it's been excellent and very important to our community. That you have people that want things to be good. And right now, one of the big things the city's doing is they are making sure that they're helping to provide jobs in our local city. And parents need to know that it's important that the city support the new industry that wants to come in, make sure they're doing the right thing and producing work for people to get a good job and enough work, money to be able to raise their children.
This is AM 1220, 98.1 FM, KHTS. Carl Goldman with you. We are chatting with Dennis Kuntz, one of the original founders of the city on that first city council back in 1987. And Santa Clarita was a very, very different community then, but a lot of the foundation for what we have today, incredible schools, a really well thought out area, low crime. Many of those anchors that we're experiencing today started back with you and city council. And then of course, we just talked about New Hall Land and Farming being a big, big component to that as well.
Well, our community, it's important that we have the businesses here and have the county involved also. And so it's, it's really important that we nurture all that information out there to whether it's the county, the cities and having a relationship with cities and the state of California and the county. It's just important that we keep in charge of and making sure our voice gets out there. So everybody is covered.
So that first city council meeting was 32 years ago.
Yes.
Hard to believe. Back when you had more hair as did I.
You do have to bring that up.
Giving you a hard time here, but so sitting, if you go back to that time and now look at Santa Clarita today, is it what you envisioned back then?
Pretty much so, yes. I'm sure there's been some faltering, but not many of it. There have been some people that have not done their right. And I'm not interested in, in pointing fingers at anybody about it. Because those are ebbs and flows anyway, that I expect in life, whether it's in the United States, federal government, whatever they're doing, that that happens in any situation, whether it's in schools or, or homes and families don't get along very well sometimes. But they always usually gets patched up and get back together again and work again.
So I'd like to Dennis, go into a few specific categories and really talk about those and the vision with that. Number one, I think for this community is education, our schools. And I know that they're dear to your heart. You, you're attached to the Hart School District. Your wife Linda is one of the school board members of the Williams Hart District. Talk about education. Why do you think that's, why do you think our schools are so stellar here in Santa Clarita?
Well, one is they got people that care about how they're teaching. A lot of people don't understand that teaching children to do the right thing and learn, you're trying to get them ready to go to work and find a job that's going to pay them money so that they can provide for their own families once they become a family. And we're lucky that we've had enough people like Buck McKeon and my wife that care what the schools do. We're still working on schools to keep moving forward. And that's true in any job, whether you work for any industry of any kind, you still have to keep renewing yourself, relearning what you're supposed to be doing. Cause people forget how to do certain things because they get busy doing it one way. And all of a sudden they find out, oh gee, I, I think I better change what I'm doing. And that's important things for humans to work with is to be willing to develop themselves as they move on.
And I also think, I mean, compare us to right down, down the valley into the San Fernando Valley and the part of LA Unified School System, which is totally dysfunctional. The difference, I think is here in Santa Clarita, and this goes back to the initial days of city formation with you Dennis Kuntz, is, is that you had a partnership between business, the government, in this case, the city government, the school system itself. And more importantly too, you had tremendous, and we still have tremendous parent involvement. So I think the combination of those four legs have made our schools and continue to keep our schools in that, that stellar category.
Oh, I agree with that. That's true. It's very important that parents are very much involved in the school. When they, much like voters, if they don't go to the polls or their parents don't go to the school and talk to the school what they want and what they don't like and what they do like, it's important that they participate and let their children know they're participating. And the children will respond to it better and the school will respond better. And the teachers will respond better.
Absolutely. Now let's, let's slide over to the next category, crime. We're one of the safest, we're now the third largest city in Los Angeles. You have Los Angeles, city itself, Long Beach, and now Santa Clarita. And yet we're one of the safest communities in the country for, for a population our size. Back when you were forming the city itself, what made you decide to keep the LA County sheriffs in and contract out with them rather than put our own police force in place?
What that came out of is that the city knew, when we sat down, we knew that was going to cost money to be able to do a fire department, be able to do the, the, the people that are going to run it for us when we tell them what we want. And they're, and the people we hire go out and do all the work. I mean, the council doesn't do all the work. We don't. So it's the people that we hire that goes out and does the work. And so we require that they are in charge, but they also have a responsibility to the employees and to the homeowners that live here. So it's paramount that they're aware they have those responsibilities. And we're going to make sure that they do it properly. But that's for every job anybody ever gets. It's the same thing, whether it's police, whether it's fire, whether it's councilman or whether it's a senator or president, they're all obligated to be in the eyes of the people and doing what the people need to have done. And that's where we come from, is that's what we want out of our people that are running the cities and counties. And, and those are not easy jobs for those people. And they spend a lot of time.
Like I said, and what's cool now is we're getting, finally getting a new sheriff station too in the center of Santa Clarita. That's exciting.
And that's, and that is primarily coming from what the city's been doing, is encouraging more development for getting the stuff that the community needs.
Absolutely.
And they're the major force that's going on. And we all get compromised sometimes about whether we have enough money to do what we need. But we try to find ways to get the money to find the ways to make it right.
And one of the examples is, is our next topic, and that's transportation. And if there's a sore point for anybody, the number one challenge and the number one complaint is traffic is a bear and it's going to get worse and worse. What most folks don't realize is if we didn't really work on the, both the expansion of the five freeway, the expansion of the 14 freeway, and more importantly, the Cross Valley Connector, we would be in deep trouble right now. Connie Warden Roberts was the, the maven of transportation here.
What a wonderful woman she was. I sure liked her. She, she was very knowledgeable and, and she was very involved in the community. And I really appreciated her.
And she was passionate, passionate about that Cross Valley Connector. The first, I had served with her on the Canyon Country Chamber back in the early nineties and Connie was harping on, on the fact that we were going to have gridlock on Soladad if we didn't get that Cross Valley Connector. And she was singing that tune for, for 20, 25 years until we actually got that, that put into place. And that's another good example of private, it was a combination of government funding from federal, state, county, city funding, and also the private sector. So another good example.
Yes.
As, as was the case with the expansion of the five freeway with the five coalition and Victor Lyndon, I'm over there.
Well, see, one of the things that has bothered me is the widening of our freeways, that should have happened 20 years ago. And that's, and that's the fault of the state mutually. But it also can be considered the fault of the public. There wasn't enough pressure being pushed on the state to widen the roads. They decided to spend the money elsewhere. And it's, and we needed those roads put in sooner than they were put in. I'm happy that they finally decided to do it. And it's, and it's made it very hard for people. When they finally did it, it interfered with a lot of traffic to begin with. So it was making things even worse in the process.
We're talking with Dennis Kuntz, one of the original city council members here in Santa Clarita, going back to 1987 on KHTS. Carl Goldman with you. The, when, when I moved up here, when we bought, my wife and I bought the radio station in 1990, in the early nineties, the, the first big crisis or issue that we had, that, that I became involved with was Elsmere Canyon, where a dump was going to get placed in Elsmere Canyon off of, off of San, what's now Main, Main Street, but what Railroad Avenue was San Fernando Road. And the city was able to, it was David against Goliath and the city was able to stop that when everyone said it wasn't going to be possible. What would you say, that was, that was early nineties. So maybe that was five, six years after the city was formed. Going back to 1987, Dennis, in your mind, can you recall what the most challenging issue was in the early days? Was there something similar to Elsmere or anything like that?
Well, let's start out with the first year.
Okay.
The first year, we were going to be required, all five of the city council would have to run again. My job was they sent me to Sacramento and saying that we want some continuity on the first city council. And we finally convinced them that that's what we needed. So that kept me on a little longer because they also changed some voting times too. But the important thing was three people had to run. And so we kept two in place and we ended up only losing one person and that was me. And I lost that. But hey, that's part of what goes on. And I finally resolved myself that it's okay. And, and I've stayed involved. And it's, so it's, it was important that we, that's the first thing we did was to make sure that the whole council didn't have to run. Because their politics, if enough people are not involved in it and are really concentrated on seeing to it, they get the right people. Cause quite often the, the federal government takes up more time. And so they're willing to work in that period of time to make things right. But they need to be involved in that second cycle, which is the one in between. And they need to be involved with that one because that one's important too. In fact, it produces more people that are fighting for you than you have in the, during those two times.
Was water an issue back then or was Castaic Lake Water Agency already formed and serving the, the valley with water?
No, the new water system was not done then. We had water system already in place with the canals and whatnot. But the new setup, when we started, when we merged them, in fact, I even one time went to ask if, could I get on that board? And I didn't make it. But it was important. Water's very important to us. Some people don't know that. They, they're used to it, the water coming out of the spout. And the water for us is very important because of the, our products on the ground, having food is important. And we're one of the biggest nations in the world that provide food. And so as long as we can keep that food flowing, we got to make sure that we've got everything we need for the people that are living here. And with the people coming in from out of the United States wanting to be here, that's a big process. And money's got to be put available to see to it. Everybody's taken care of.
Dennis Kuntz is with us here on KHTS, AM 1220, 98.1 FM. Carl Goldman with you. Wrapping up things here as we go back to 1987, the formation of the city, Dennis, one of our founding fathers. Here we are about to reach 2020. And if you could look in a crystal ball right now, we already, you already answered a question before saying that, that it's the foundation of what you laid and what Santa Clarita is today is pretty much the way you envisioned it. Where do you see the valley heading in the next 10, 20 years? If you had to look through the crystal ball? What would be your wish for our community?
I don't think the city's finished growing. I'm not sure how far they're envisioning. I haven't heard from them, how far they want to go.
Numbers I've just, what we've seen in the plan is, is we're probably going to max out at about 450,000. We're now at about 310. Of course, the whole development on the west side off the 126. And the goal would be to merge all that in into... And the goal would be to merge all that in into, at least from my perspective, merge that into one city, one government. Not try and split it up and end up with a Oxnard Ventura, end up with a Palmdale Lancaster, where their, and the cities are at odds with each other.
Well, I agree with you, I would like to do that. In fact, I'd like to run again. So that's down the road somewhere, maybe. No, I think it's important to get the people involved and realize that they do have power. They do have the ability to make things happen. They need to stop counting on people that are in the jobs. They need to count on themselves to participate, to help them do the job.
Right, so really gets down to valley wide participation. And this valley has been, been way above standard out there. You have a tremendous amount of people who are out there rolling up their sleeves, doing all kinds of unique partnerships and, and things that are being done for the benefit of the valley and the benefit of the whole rather than the individual.
Oh, yes. I'm very proud of the people that step up and decide that they'll take their time to help make things happen right, yes.
So Dennis, it's a pleasure to have you here. I, one, one last thing, because about a year ago, we, we did an interview with Carl Boyer, who was one of the original members. And Carl unfortunately, Carl wrote a book about the history of Santa Clarita, which is well worth reading. But we lost Carl a number of months ago and maybe you can talk about him for a second.
Oh, well, he's worthwhile talking about. Yeah, the guy is an amazing man. And he helped a lot, but everybody did. But he was honest, straightforward. I think that's important and anybody that's going to deal with public, they got to be straightforward. And he was. I, I liked having him around. And I, it'd be hard to not like him.
Right, he was passionate about the city and then, and then later he was the first one to really connect with sister cities and setting up that whole program. So he's, he's someone we definitely are going to miss. Dennis Kuntz, thank you so much.
Oh, thank you.
For joining us, Carl Goldman here, AM 1220, KHTS, we'll have you back again.
Okay, thank you, bye bye.